Welcome to the March 19, 2019 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers, on the shelves if you need one. First, we'll have a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Shannon Ripberger.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Holly Hennies, please, for the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 5, 2019. Number six is to authorize one Glock G-17 9-millimeter duty weapon to be declared a surplus for the purpose of commendation as submitted by the Sheriff's Office. Number seven is to continue the discussion regarding the increased usage of Jim Street until after the meeting with the City of Rapid City. And finally, number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of February 2019 as submitted by Human Resources.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, five through eight? At this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion, five through eight?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Seven.
First seven, thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. If not, do we have a motion for five, six, and eight, please?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, Mr. Commissioner DeSanto.
Just for public notice, Jim Street is a small street off of Highway 44, out past West River Electric on the right side. It's about a 150-yard-long street that's used to not get used at all, but now that that new neighborhood has gone in back there, it seems that the usage of that road has increased probably twentyfold. And it's just a gravel road, so it's getting beat up pretty bad. And we're going to be talking to the city about what they think they should be done with the street because that's probably going to be annexed at some point in time. And just wanted the public to know that that's where Jim Street is and what we're discussing and what we should do with that street to keep it from getting torn up in the meantime. So, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Drews, please.
At the request of some property owners there along Jim Street, I'd like to ask that that be continued until our May 7 meeting.
So, oh, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's a motion by Drews and second by DeSanto. We do have a meeting tomorrow at 3:00.
Right.
So we'll probably have that meeting, but then we can continue it on this agenda, if that's okay, Commissioner Drews and Commissioner DeSanto, till May 7.
You bet.
Yes.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor to continue this till May 7. Do we have a second from DeSanto? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're on regular item and agenda items nine through 14. Number nine, please. Appointment of Mr. William Podaski... I can't say the word.
Podraski.
To the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for term of five years. Ms. Holly Hennies.
Yes, Commissioners, this is your second time addressing this issue. This is the time to do the actual appointment for Mr. Podraski. He is here in the audience if the Commission has any question for him, but the motion we're seeking is to make the appointment to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a term of five years.
Do you have a motion or discussion?
I'd make the motion.
Motion by Drews. Second by LaCroix. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to acknowledge that Bill Podraski is in the audience today. I appreciate that you are willing to step forward, become a part of this, and thank you very much. And your background is going to mean a lot for this, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Any other discussion? If not, we do have a motion by Drews, second by LaCroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, items from Auditor. 10A, new liquor license application. Ms. Cindy here?
She make a motion to table at the time being?
Okay, do we have a motion to table?
Move to table until such time Cindy can make it down from the Auditor's office.
Move to table by DeSanto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 11A, Shannon Ripberger, please. Abatement application.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Ripberger, Director of Equalization. I have an abatement request that comes to you from my office. I'd like to make an explanation of this. It is a simple abatement. So we have a mobile home that moved, left the county. Because it was gone, the Sheriff's Department couldn't collect the taxes for 2016 and determined that they were uncollectible. We had abated the 2018's assessment. 2017 is left there then in between. And the tax bill comes due on that. The Sheriff's Department goes out to collect, finds out, well, that's the one that we already said was uncollectible. So it comes back, and for whatever reason, the Treasurer and the Sheriff's Office would rather this be abated for 2017 than called uncollectible again. Summary is, trailer house is gone, ain't here anymore.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for Shannon? If not, a motion, please?
Move to approve 2017 abatement application for partial 8004904 in the amount of 5306.
Moved by DeSanto, is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroix. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. Items from Highway, Superintendent Joe Miller.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. First up, Item A here, 2019 Annual Award Bid Recommendations. I guess I was trying to figure out a quick way to do this, but it sounds like we're going to just read each one here. And I do have information on last year's if you want to know the difference between what it cost this year and what it cost last year. 2019 project, aggregate stockpile project, cursed pit, which is up north of Wall. Three bids were received. We recommend awarding the contract to Rogers Construction in the amount of $413,600. The asphalt-concrete overlay project, Radar Hill Road and 156th Avenue. Three bids were received. Lowest bid is J&amp;J Asphalt in the amount of $456,658. Asphalt treatment or surface treatment project, two bids were received. We recommend awarding the contract to Simon Contractors in the amount of $774,878.91. Next one down here, asphalt-surface crack sealing project, three bids were received. We recommend that the... Oh, excuse me. The contract go to Aztec Corp. out of St. Cloud in the amount of $155,118. Next one on the list here, aggregate material supply, three bids were received. We recommend... Oh, this is the confusing one here. Award AST 2019-01 aggregate materials Rapid City to Pete Lean and Sons in Rapid City based on location. And then aggregate materials Rapid City, Western Construction based on location. Western is based east of town on Longview there, Longview and Radar Hill. And then Pete Lean is obviously west of town, so cheaper for us to get materials for wall from Western and then cheaper for, like, Hill City to get materials from Pete Lean. Asphalt concrete composite, three bids were received. We recommend awarding to J&amp;J Asphalt of Rapid City. Asphalt maintenance materials. We recommend awarding those to Western Construction of Rapid City. Precast concrete pipe and bridge, only one bid was received from Forterra Concrete. We recommend awarding the contract to Forterra Concrete Products. Cutback and emulsified asphalt, only one bid was received. We recommend awarding that to Simon Contractors of Rapid City. Deicing sand, two bids were received. We recommend awarding that to Western Construction of Rapid City. Fencing, two bids were received. We recommend awarding to B&amp;D Fencing of Box Elder. Guard rail, only one bid was received. We recommend awarding that to Hilt Construction of Rapid City. Magnesium chloride solution, we recommend that... Awarding that to ZNS Dust Control of Rapid City. Seeding, fertilizing, mulching, and erosion control blanket, two bids were received. We recommend awarding that to Eminem Fencing. Timber bridge materials, only one bid received from Wheeler Lumber out of Whitewood. We recommend awarding that to Wheeler Lumber. And then, last but not least, traffic control materials, one bid was received. Traffic control materials Newman Signs in Jamestown, North Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we... Is the Commission okay with taking all the bids in one motion, or did you want to do them separately? What is your recommendation?
I'd recommend all.
Commissioner LaCroix says recommend all. Anybody opposed? Okay, do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner LaCroix. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeSanto. Discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
All right, next up, authorization to purchase corrugated metal pipe. We've purchased corrugated metal pipe, which is our culverts, off the Beetle County bid for some time. I don't know the exact how long we've been doing it. We have all the specs... I have all the specs here if you'd like to see them. We carry an inventory at each location now. In the past, we didn't do that. This dollar amount's been around that $25,000 mark in the past couple of years. So we just would request authorization to purchase that corrugated metal pipe off the Beetle County bid.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroix. Discussion, please? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C?
All right, authorization to purchase one new motor grader. You guys already authorized the purchase of it. We did a lot of homework and a lot of work went into choosing a motor grader. We sent our operators, both, you know, operators with very little experience and operators with 30 years of experience, to demo both the Caterpillar machine and the John Deere machine. Our operators rated the deer an average of 22 out of 25 possible points. Our operators rated the cat machine an average of 17 out of 25. So our operators liked the John Deere. Obviously, they've had it for years, so it is kind of hard for change. There were several different things that were brought up that the operators do like about the John Deeres. I can discuss those with you at a later time if you'd like. But we would recommend the purchase of a new John Deere from RDO 772 in the amount of $216,880.
Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Joe, on that RDO bid, that's a seven-year warranty, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And is that unlimited miles then?
That's a seven-year, 7,000-hour.
Okay, or 7,000 or seven years, okay.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Yes, Joe, just for clarification, on the cat bid, we were looking at two extra years of warranty on those cats, right?
Yes, sir.
When you take that into consideration, the trade-in value would increase, would it not? When you have two years left, if we're going to trade at seven years, we got two years of warranty left on those cats?
You could say that, possibly, but, you know, I've heard from both dealers at this time, we don't know what that market's going to be like from seven years from now.
Okay.
It could go up, it could go down. That's kind of a...
Subjective.
It's a moving target at this point. We can only go off what the knowledge we have.
Right. I respect the work that Joe and Mark and Dan did to study this whole thing. Haven't really come to a conclusion as to whether or not the move with the Deeres will actually save the county money or not, but it's all subjective. The fuel is subjective to operator experience and how they're going to do things. But I do have to defer somewhat to the operators themselves made it very clear at the meetings that I was at. And as Joe pointed out, it's difficult to make changes, even though those changes may in the long run be beneficial. But these operators seem to be pretty convinced, and so do the mechanics, that it's better to stick with the deer at this point in time. I will like... I will want to see at the end of the year, after a year of using the new deer, what kind of fuel per hour usage we get out of that. That's one of my curiosities there, so if we can keep good track of that, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, and we do it. I actually had our accountant pull what we used fuel consumption-wise last year. See if I can find it here. So, last year, this is in 2018, we put a total hours on all... Let's see here. All 10 machines, we did about 6,700 hours, and we used 35,000 gallons of fuel. Comes to an average of 5.39. Note that we have, you know, we have one, two, three... Five of those 10 are down in the 4.5 range. We've got one, two, three... Four of those are in the 5.5 range, and then we have one up there in the 6 range. So operators can vary greatly.
Right. One thing that, when you point that out to me, it does bring to mind that in our bids or in our proposals that we received from John Deere, they were substantially lower than that, than what their estimated fuel usage was going to be. It's about, I think they were estimating 3.9 to 4.2. Is that correct?
The John Deeres, they... Everything I've got from Wade, from RDO, states about 4.5.
Oh, 4.5?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's in line with what they... Okay. All right, thanks, Joe.
Madam Chair, motion to approve?
There'd be a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect and second by DeSanto. Commissioner LaCroix, for discussion?
I second it.
I second it.
I'm sorry.
I second it.
I thought you were raising your hand to speak.
I am, too. I wanted to speak, too.
Okay, Commissioner LaCroix?
I didn't want to interrupt in the middle of a motion, so I...
Sorry.
Seconded the motion. Joe, I just want to express my appreciation of the hard work that you and Mark and Dan have done on this. I think coming forward with a replacement plan took some time and some thought process, and I appreciate that. But I think the biggest thing that I appreciate out of all this is giving those operators the chance to go out and try both... I don't want to say vehicles, but machinery, to see what works best for them because, you know, knowing how each one works a little bit different, and we talk about training new people and some of the wear and tear on the equipment could be jeopardized, but I think that's what speaks highest to me, is hearing that they came back with what they preferred, and I think that answers a lot of questions for us. But I think you guys did a really good job of coming up with a plan, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSanto?
One last comment. I do believe that introducing an additional player into the mix created some incentive to do a lot of research and possibly gave some incentive to both possible bidders to give us the best they could give us. So I think it was a good thing to add that additional competition into the mix.
Absolutely.
So, Commissioner, the first motion would be, and we do have a motion by Ross Connect, second by LaCroix, is on the purchase of the John Deere. The second motion, after we remove that first one, would be to declare surplus and trade for the other vehicle. So any other discussion on the purchase?
Do we have anyone from the audience that wanted to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a good point. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Thank you, Commissioner Santo. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I would make a motion to declare the 2009 John Deere motor grader surplus for purpose of trade.
Sir, a second, please.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? If not, how about from the public, since I've been forgetting that sometimes? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, if we could, Commissioner, it looks like Cindy here? Was here.
Yes, she's here.
Oh, she's behind Joe Miller.
Get that off.
So can we have a motion, please, to bring off the table on number?
10.
10.
Move to bring number 10 off the table for discussion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion made by DeSanto, second by Drews, to bring off the table number 10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Mohler, please.
Apologize for being late this morning. We have a new retail on-off sale malt beverage with a South Dakota Farm license for Red Bison LLC that we would like to ask for approval on.
And your name?
Cindy Mohler.
Thank you. Motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroix. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D. Thank you, Joe, for your patience.
Yeah. Item D... Let's see here, bridge inspections. We went with... We've selected KLJ of Rapid City to do our bridge inspections this year. Our engineer, Bill Welk, vetted a lot of the engineers, engineering firms that were on those, on that list. He thinks this will be the best fit for the county, especially because they do or they will have a bridge design engineer here located in Rapid City for us to bounce questions off of. Or the example was used with the Dark Canyon Bridges last year. We... Once we got the decking off of that, we found that there was more damage than we originally thought, so we had to bring somebody in and get a recommendation on that. So having a bridge design engineer here in Rapid City will be beneficial for the county in that matter. The inspections will still come out of West Fargo, but having that design engineer here in Rapid City will be very beneficial. And then they're actually currently doing our design on the Rochford Road Bridge, so...
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have a motion, please, on number D?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroix.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion? Board? Public, any discussion? Yes, sir?
Just a quick question about the Dark.
Up here, sir? Thank you, sir. And your name, sir?
Bruce Ellison.
Okay.
I live in Dark Canyon. Thank you for bringing up the Dark Canyon Bridges. I don't know if this is appropriate time to comment on it, but there was initial, I think it was less than new asphalt or tar that was put in between the new bridge and the old road. That's really coming apart pretty fast, and there's a lot of holes in there that are developing. I don't know if that's a temporary fix or not, but I was hoping at some point just to raise that with the Commission of Engineer, just to let you know that that's happening from the West.
And maybe we could get your number later on. Leave your number with Ms. Holly, and Joe could contact you with that information, just to make sure... Okay, thank you, sir. If we would, Holly, thank you. Okay, item D, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, please.
We would... The county or the Highway Department would request a continuance on this item. Didn't have all our ducks quite in a row, looking over some things. Just found some i's that weren't crossed and some t's, or some i's that weren't dotted and some t's that weren't crossed. So we would request a continuance till the next meeting, please.
Okay. And so is there a motion to continue to the next meeting, please?
Move to continue to next meeting, April 2nd?
Yes, sir? Is there a second?
Second.
No discussion on the continues, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, items from Human Resources. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Morrow, Human Resources Director for Pennington County. We've got a number of items, actually, and most of these are from the Compensation Committee, so I'll go through them individually. The first one, actually, is one that we've continued from a prior meeting. After further discussion and further review, we believe that the final document is ready for your review and approval. What we have done with the Compensation Committee bylaws is expand the representation of the committee to include five elected officials. The original document only included two. We also are including five appointed department heads. The original document included two. The one county commissioner is remaining as well, and then one employee at large, and that's a change from one, or, excuse me, two on the original bylaws from 2012. The other change is the size of the meeting requirement, so the quorum will consist now of seven members with this larger number of participants compared to five in the original document from 2012. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix?
I just want to take the point and time to thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys have done. I know you revisited some things, and sometimes it helps to let the dust settle and then come back and review some things, and I think it brings up some good discussions. The only question I'd have on all this was just some clarification, how you come up with the benefit part-time being 29 hours compared to 20s?
That would be item 13B. I'm not there yet, sir, so this would be just for the bylaws itself at this point, so... No, thank you for that, though.
I'm getting ahead of the game.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews, 13B.
I'd make a motion that we accept the committee bylaws.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Drews, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion from the board? How about anything from the public? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, please, 13B.
Great, 13B. And Commissioner LaCroix, I'll answer that. So actually, it ties back to a clerical error that we made. This ties back to the Affordable Care Act, first of all, from when that was implemented. The 29 hours, actually, is where the cutoff was. Somehow, when we updated the handbook this last fall, we made an error and changed it from 29 to 20. This is just to make a correction to our error. So not a change, it's just to update something that we messed up. update something that we messed up. So, no. Great question, though. So line item one there, section 3.1, is updating the part-time benefited. To read correctly, it's 29 hours instead of 20 as it's currently listed in the handbook. Item number two under here is again in section 3.1, is to again clarify the information around eligibility for part-time non-benefited employees. This has been the process, it just wasn't included in the update and we put that into the handbook again. So this is just again to bring clarification to that process. The next two line items here, items three and item four, are actually combined, but there's two separate impacts and I wanted to clarify that. So item three is actually in the packet that you would have received today, there should have been three additional pages. And on the second and third page, I believe, in the order they were in the packet, shows the proposed changes to section 318 of the handbook. And then it also lists all of the Compensation Administration pieces underneath. On the final page there that goes with that, you'll see where those had been listed under section 320. They didn't need to be a separate section and actually it's kind of a conglomerate of different pieces that weren't really fully addressed under that section. We wanted to just bring clarification and bring all of those sections under 318 because they all deal with the Compensation Administration process. And this would bring clarity again to the handbook and actually get them into a much easier to read format. The other piece that goes along with that, however, is the piece under section four where it talks about regarding the eligibility for annual step increases and performance increases for full-time, part-time benefited and part-time non-benefited. So again, you'll see that on the first page where it says proposed 318 and the yellow highlighted sections. So this was there and it was part of the process again, but was not included in the handbook. So we wanted to make sure that that was specified, that people understood. There were some questions, well, who qualifies? What does this matter? And again, those are the three categories of our employment categories that actually qualify for the annual steps. And then under performance pay, you'll see again that we put some additional information, full-time, part-time benefited employees on their anniversary date. But it also specifies here, and this is to mirror annual steps with performance pay. So this line is in addition. Employees participating in Performance Improvement Plan will not be eligible until that improvement conditions have been satisfied. So that is a new line. And again, that's to make sure that the performance pay section mirrors that of the annual step section with regard to the Performance Improvement Plans. And then the final piece we have here would be under line item number five. And this actually is to bring back significant other into our policy with regard to emergency personal leave. And then in addition to that, we've also suggested that we're adding the definition for what that actually means. And that was part of our challenge initially when we voted on this last fall, was we really had a hard time determining what significant other meant. And we did find a definition that was acceptable to the members of the committee. And we wanted to propose that as a change as well for the handbook.
Could you read that so the public has?
Yes. Oh, most definitely. So for the purposes of application of the emergency personal leave provisions of this policy, significant other is defined as follows. Significant other means a relationship exists between two people, neither of whom is married, that is intended to remain indefinitely and where there is joint responsibility for each other's common welfare, there are significant shared financial obligations, and there's a shared primary residence.
Thank you, John. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
How do we come to that conclusion?
How do we?
In other words, in other words, how do we come to the conclusion that they, let's say they're applying for emergency personal leave, how do we come to the conclusion that they have this relationship that's meant to remain indefinitely, or that there's joint responsibility for each other's common welfare, or that there's shared financial obligations? What do we do to ascertain that information?
No, I think it's a great question, Mr. DeSanto. But it comes down to basically an honor system and a discussion with the employee. And then the department heads or elected officials should be having those discussions with their people anyway with regard to emergency personal leave. And this just actually gives us some data points to consider as we're saying, does this person qualify or don't they qualify under that? There is no additional cost to the county for this. They're actually, their leave hours, it's just the opportunity for the use them to take care of matters with regard to that person. So, no, I think it's a great question.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Thanks, Mark, for that question because that was, during that meeting, this was a big discussion. It took up a good part of the meeting when we originally took that up. And after, like I said, the dust settled, we remember Ron had brought it back up and saying, you know, what is this? And before he departed. And that's why I thought it was probably good to have the committee revisit it and after everything settled down and kind of look things over. But like I said before, I really appreciate the work that you guys done. You guys came back and did some more, after things have settled down and talked to other people and cleared your minds and looked at things from a new point of view. And I really appreciate you putting on an hourly employee on the committee because I think that adds some great value to the committee. And the way, the process that you guys come up with to get some of that feedback, I think is very important. I was reading through that and I think you guys put some good thoughts into that. And I think it's going to benefit the Compensation Committee greatly. So I appreciate the work that you guys did.
They've done an amazing job. I can't say how pleased and proud I am of that group and the work that they put into these things. Nearly everybody on the committee had a family member or friend or someone they could think of, I mean personally could think of, that had a significant other relationship of some type. So it made sense and it was something that was close to home for folks.
Final follow-up is?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Is that this, the Compensation Committee was formed to have those discussions and vent all those things because as a commission, we would be spending that much time having those conversations on the dais. And so having them really vent these, what's going on with employees and the compensation is a great benefit to the commission.
And I appreciate it as well, listening to the discussion because we're here to protect all our county employees during an emergency personal leave. So we want to make sure family members are taken care of. So I think from what we just discussed, I agree with Commissioner DeSanto in bringing up the question and Commissioner La Croix. It's something that a lot of times, I remember even at the city, the definition of different things and treating people with respect in our county or our city. So I think this was good discussion and came up with a pretty good answer. And like you said, it's on a basis of, you know, that merit, or not merit, but what do you call it?
Well, just the personal discussion with folks.
And I think once you ask somebody enough questions, you'll figure out the truth. So I think that's where we're going to go in the future and it's a good thing. So any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the handbook updates as presented.
Motion made by Drews?
Second.
Second by La Croix. Any other discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item 13C, and a lot of work from the Compensation Committee has gone into this as well. So historically, the most recent full compensation review that we have done was conducted by Condrine Associates in 2014 and implemented in 2015. The goal at that point was to have these done every four to five years again, to maintain consistency, to ensure that we were paying an equitable amount and taking care of the associates or employees, excuse me, in a manner that actually would help attract and retain those employees for the benefit of the county. What we're asking at this point is actually to go out and request proposals for another review, with that to be completed later this year and then for use in the 2020 budget cycle. So about this time a year out, it would be actually part of the budget discussion. So we could actually implement then for the calendar year, fiscal year 2021. So because of the length of time it took for the last review, we're anticipating that if this was approved for us to go out for proposals, we would hope to have those returned to us by the first part of May and then actually expect the process to commence by August and then be completed by December at the latest. It could possibly go a little bit longer depending on the complexity and the process and if there's any delays earlier in that study. But the goal would be to have this completed and finally ready for review by you so that it could be used in the budget discussions a year out from this time.
Thank you, John. Discussion, please?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Do we have a record of what the cost of that last comprehensive compensation study was?
Yes, sir. All in total, it was about $90,000. And it included a couple of different pieces. They actually did a headcount study and then they came back and actually did a compensation study. And then they also went through and did a full review of job descriptions as well as interviewed about half of the employees in the county according to the records that I was able to find.
So what would we probably expect? I mean, that was five years ago. What would we expect today?
Well, I visited with a couple of other counties that are currently doing this and they have various versions that they're doing. Anywhere between 25 and 60,000 seems to be what they've done. They've eliminated the headcount section. You'll actually notice that we're not suggesting we do that again. There wasn't a lot of value in that. Basically, it's hard to compare apples to apples when Pennington County actually, as a county, is the largest county employer in the state. So we employ about 150 people more than even many Haha County does as a total. So it's hard to find comparables that are really good to use. So we're focusing more on the actual positions themselves, the duties within those positions, and then what the compensation levels look like for comparable positions in the local economy as well as other comparable entities that would have similar types of positions. There's in the HR world or in compensation world is what they call benchmark positions. Those would be very similar no matter the size of the company or the type of employer. So those would be used to help set some of those levels as well. So all told, my estimate at this point, Mr. DeSanto or Commissioner, would be a best guess. But I think if we were at 90,000 before, I think I'd be foolish probably to think it would be much less than 70,000 to 100,000 this time. Now, the point to keep in mind as well, and this is with the last process, this was not budgeted for this year. It was intended to be done, but it wasn't budgeted. So this is a new step. And what we would recommend again after discussion with the commission, or the committee, is that this would be given to the departments as an expense factor based upon employee headcount of those departments, which is how it was handled in the last recycle, or the last cycle.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeSanto, do you have a follow-up?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ron Ross Connect.
John, is there any value in trying to use the same firm that we used the last time?
There is, actually, to some extent. So you'll see, actually, we have a list of five different proposed vendors to reach out to. The reason I have those five included is four of those five are actually been used recently or are currently in use by other county entities for this exact type of process. Condrine Associates is the firm that we actually used for the last two complete studies. So they did one in 2009 or 2008, I forget exactly the date, and then again in 2014. And then they also did a separate study for us around elected officials back in about the same time, 2008, 2009. There was a reason we brought them back. We were comfortable with them. They understood the county and some of those things are good. Now, there were some concerns, and I hesitate to share, but there were some concerns with the validity of some of the data that was presented from the 2014 study because some of the entities that were used as comparables weren't similar in many, in many ways because of the types of duties. Like, for example, our treasurer's office does much more than most treasurer's offices anywhere, even in the state, but very much different than any out-of-state treasurer's offices do. So some of that, just as a specific example, that was hard to find a comparable, yet that's the comparables that they had brought to us. So we want to be more involved, I think, in the selection and what those comparable entities are to help ensure there's additional value, no matter who the vendor is that's selected.
So we can set the parameters and dial it in as close as we want to so that they don't deviate from what we want the finished product to be?
I have in past employment settings where we've had a much larger voice, I believe, in selecting what was used for comparables. And I don't know why we wouldn't be able to voice those things in this process as well.
Any other follow-up?
Thank you.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation for the compensation study.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Ros Connect. Any other discussion? Public, any discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item D, and this actually is one that we've been working on for an extended period. We formed a subcommittee, if you will, within the county to actually review the travel needs, the travel processes. And I have to thank Commissioner DeSanto for bringing this to us as a suggested action. It gave us a chance to really dig into how travel arrangements are being made and then some of the different concerns that were being raised as well as expenses and process and consistency between departments. So the committee that we actually formed, I have to say again, these folks were so engaged and so involved in the process and offered up some amazing suggestions. And actually, Tony Virchio from the Sheriff's Department also helped draft a lot of these sections. So I can't thank him enough as well for his contributions. But we had stakeholders from a number of departments, the auditor, the commission, equalization, highway, law enforcement, planning and zoning, public defender, state attorneys, and the HR office. We're all involved to some extent in drafting this proposal. The policy that we're proposing here provides comprehensive structure and information to county employees when traveling on county business and is intended to expand upon and replace the travel-related section of the current county purchasing policy. So we believe that everything's been addressed. There's a lot of information here. There's like five or six pages of the policy and then two attachments that actually, one is for pre-travel, one is for post-travel to document those travel expenses. So I'll stand for whatever questions you may have.
Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
A typo on the first, let's see, I guess it'd be on page two. Travel policy down under authorization at the last paragraph, given time away from work and the destination of travel.
Away from work, okay.
Any other follow-up?
And then on transportation mileage, I put a question mark and it was getting late when I was reading this, but any employee having access to a county-owned vehicle must use that vehicle if available when traveling on county business. If a county department-owned vehicle is available but not taken, mileage will only be reimbursed at published lower rate. What is the published lower rate?
Okay, so the state actually has, and this mirrors the state policy with regard to travel. They, it's like half the value of the normal mileage rate. The current mileage rate, I believe, under state is 42 cents. And the other one, I believe, is like 28 or 26. It's quite a bit different using that. The reason we went with this instead and just listed that is because that changes based upon IRS guidelines and the state guidelines. But we wanted it to mirror what the state had in process.
Okay.
Oh, great question.
Any other follow-up? Commissioner DeSanto?
Let me look. I think I might have one or two more notes here.
If I could, I'm going to ask a question while you're looking.
You bet.
You say any cash advance for a trip must be reconciled with submission of any receipts, refund, unused money no later than seven workdays after completion of the trip. We give cash, what do you mean, cash advances? I was reading that
Yes.
now again and then I read it this morning, so.
So I, when I was speaking with the auditor's office about this and with other departments, that's extremely rare that they actually do an advance. Usually, everything is prepaid and pre-advanced booked. So the cash advance piece is extremely rare. I don't even know of the examples that that would fall under. So we wanted to address it.
Okay.
But again, it's not something that's being used.
Okay.
Cindy, can you help me with that at all?
Thank you.
I'm not well-versed in that. No, it's a great question.
I've just never heard of a cash advance for a trip from anybody since I've been around. But Ms. Cindy, please.
Cindy Mohler with the auditor's office. There are times when employees will travel that they don't have the cash on hand to pay for their meals. So we do their per diem. It's usually more related to per diem in advance. And then when they come back, we'll look at their agenda that they had to see what meals may have been provided or not and then just reconcile that when they get back. But we don't use that very often anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
You're welcome.
Board discussion. Commissioner DeSanto?
I just want to compliment John. John, this is exactly what I was looking for and I really appreciate it. It's very, very specific. It leaves not a whole lot to guessing, which is a good thing. And I just, I think that you guys did a great job putting this together and I think it was long overdue.
Yeah. Well, thank you, sir. Again, I can't take credit. The team that we put together was amazing. Their contributions, their involvement, their discussion points, the follow-up was fantastic. So it was a good experience.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Yes, I'll mirror that thankfulness. I think one of the things that I highlighted from the discussions before that I think is important is we always say, why don't you use Lyft or Uber or something? we always say, why don't you use Lyft or Uber or something like that? And you addressed this because people, there are some people who, with some of the things that have happened, aren't comfortable using that. And we got to remember this is county business when people are traveling, and so we want them to be as safe as possible and be able to give that option, I think, was important. And I'll just address a little bit when I hear that cash advance for, it may be unusual for the county, but where I work, a lot of those people use that because their budgets are such and such and so on. All of a sudden, they have to go out of town and it's not planned. They need that extra to do it. That's where I work at, but that's why they, it's not uncommon where I work. But I just pass it on. But you guys did a really good job on this, and I'd just like to thank Mark for bringing it up.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner DeSanto?
Just one thing. Commissioner Ross Connect just pointed out to me that that mileage rate is actually 23 cents per mile.
Twenty-three? Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have a motion yet, board.
So, move.
Approve.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 14, proposed Pennington County Hard Rock Mining Ordinance. Holly, would you like to do the presentation for this? Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. This agenda item is in relation to the creation of the Hard Rock Mining Ordinance for Pennington County. In the past year, you have been presented several options for the creation of a committee who would prepare that ordinance. I will apologize for my oversight. I did not include in your packets the committee proposal from the planning department that they had done in March of 2018. But the item in front of you today is a proposal to forego the traditional committee process that Pennington County has used in the past and direct staff to start working on that ordinance utilizing Lawrence County as a foundation. Staff fully recognizes that Lawrence County is not the perfect fit for Pennington. We are definitely different. But we feel that since theirs has been vetted and litigated, it would be a good foundation for us to start with, as well as utilizing other ordinances that we have researched and found. I was involved in the aggregate mining committee process. It was not the easiest. Trying to think outside of the box and how we can do things a little bit differently, better, efficiently, more effectively. The process that you have in front of you, again, foregoes the traditional committee process, but would allow for more public interaction and public engagement in creating a 90-day comment period and review period as to where anybody and everybody, we would invite to submit their comments, concerns, questions on the proposed draft when it gets done before we even go into any of the required legal publications that will be done in front of the planning commission and the board of commissioners. Also included in your packet is a proposal from a citizen, Mr. Bruce Ellison, who is in the audience today. He had proposed information or a committee foundation also as well last year. So, he is in the audience if you have any questions. That's the brief.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Presentation for you. I'll stand for any questions. Any questions before we move to the public, I think, first, and then, if that's okay, Ms. Holly, and then have the board ask some questions. Do we have anybody in the audience today that would like to speak on this? Sir? Your name, sir?
My name is Bruce Ellison. I'm a Rapid City, Pennington County resident. And Holly, thank you for the notice for today. Last year, I had proposed a series of public hearings during the course of a week that would address the question or provide input to the board as to who should make up the committee, the drafts, the Hard Rock Mining Ordinance. As a citizen, as a person involved with many groups and concerned protecting resources within Pennington County, there's a lot of concern in our county for this. And while the 90-day comment period is helpful, if this is, this is kind of, what I was asked when I was, it was suggested by the commission, I put together a proposal, was to set up public hearings for public input. This seems to, the proposal that's being put forth seems to say, let's let the staffed, staffed drafts and ordinance and then put it out to the public. And I'm a little bit concerned about that process. There were concerns raised about the so-called non-hard rock gravel mining ordinance as it being too industry-friendly and rather than resource protection. I have talked to engineers who are mining engineers. They tell me there are processes that could be potentially safe for our resources, but would require a lot of regulation and rules. I know there's a tremendous amount of public concern about now two hard rock mining proposals on the other side of Pactola in Rapid City's water supply watershed, certainly my watershed, living along Rapid Creek. And I just want to express a concern. Before, it looked like we were going to have this very open process, both in terms of selection of the committee, what the purpose of the ordinance was going to be. And now it looks like it's going to be the public comes last. And I know the idea wasn't to demean or to lessen the input of the public, but I'm not sure that this process, in fact, guarantees what many of us were hoping for. So, that, I mean, who makes up the committee to make these decisions? Should it just be staff from the board? That's not my understanding of what the commission wanted last year. In fact, I had understood that we were going to come together about this time of year to decide when, in fact, we'd start holding public hearings as to these three issues. So, this is a very dramatic departure from at least what I had understood the commission had asked me to do and what it intended to do. So, I would, I just wanted to share these thoughts. I'm in favor of maximization of public input. I'm in favor, this is such an important ordinance for us. The board, as it knows, under Chapter 7, 8 of the South Dakota compiled laws, has responsibilities and authorities. And they're about the public. So, I don't know that if anything more, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any, anything more that they would like to ask me about what I had previously proposed. But don't make this a meeting in the dark that we then find out afterwards. And, you know, the biggest concern that we have, and I have as an attorney and being in front of agencies, is too often, all the decisions are already made before we end up having a public hearing. And I have a lot of problems with that because that's become the norm rather than the exception to the rule. And licenses are being issued before we have hearings on whether to issue a license. It's the way our state agencies are operating now. This board shouldn't be doing the same thing. This is too important to us, please. We have tremendous water resources in our county. If we do not adequately protect them, and I don't mean protect them as long as it doesn't interfere with corporate activities, I mean so that this board can make a decision. For example, is it in the public interest to grant a hard rock mining ordinance to a particular project? Is that even going to be part of this process? So, again, those are my thoughts. I'm happy to answer questions. Please maximize rather than minimize public involvement. A lot of people have so much to contribute, and it's more than just a five-minute talk or a 10-minute talk or something in writing that forms into a big pile. You got to hear it. Please hear from the varied members of our community about who should be on this commission and what it should do.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. I'll have you stand up here for just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Any question? Commissioner DeSanto for Mr. Ellison.
Mr. Ellison, I think what the purpose here is, is to give us a foundation.
Yes, sir.
And then allow a great deal of public testimony. And it's giving them an opportunity to have something to look at to begin with, a building block, and then to come in and give us their comments to further build upon that foundational cornerstone, I guess I would call it. I'm with you. I have great concerns about hard rock mining and what it will do to our black hills and our watershed and everything else. But I think that starting out with a foundation like this and then building upon that foundation is giving the public more of an opportunity for input. Because when they come in here with nothing, with just a blank slate, it tends to go in so many different directions that, well, as you saw with the gravel, it's very difficult to get anywhere. But if you have a, start out with a foundation, it gives them some idea as to a direction, and then we can build off that direction. I don't think that this in any way, shape, or form is trying to take away from the public's input. I think what this is really doing is committees tend to have people with, come to committees with an agenda, I guess I would say. If we don't form this committee, then we don't have anybody there with an agenda. And when we have this framework to use, then people come and comment on it that, I just feel like it opens up the discussion better but gives a good basis as to where to start.
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, and I appreciate the comments. And I, I mean, I can't disagree strongly with it. I mean, it's a question of what happens from here on. And I accept your feelings that this may, in fact, enhance public input. I really hope it does. I mean, I really hope that those who then listen to the public input really listen. But I think we may go off in many directions when you open it up to the public anyway by the nature of people having an opportunity to talk. But I appreciate the seriousness of this board in the way it's approaching this matter. And as I've had limited involvement up to this point, I simply want to just offer, if there's something that I may be able to contribute in any way in this process, aside from making the presentation, I'm happy to do that. I'm semi-retired. I have a fair amount of time. I am very interested in this process. I have participated in legislative drafting this year. And I've been doing a lot of talking with attorney, state's attorneys and others involved in not this particular kind of county ordinance, but other kinds in terms of powers of the county, trying to, just trying to understand as a citizen, what you, as my representative, what are you really authorized to do? Because I'd like to maximize your authority rather than minimize your authority. And I thank you for all for your time.
Stay here for just a minute. Follow-up, Commissioner DeSanto?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Ross Connect.
Hi, Bruce. Yeah, this gets to be pretty complex, and we don't want to mess it up.
Sure.
And I agree with Mark. We just can't start from scratch. Or I think we're going to be wasting a lot of time, I think, times of this essence. Have you read the Lawrence County ordinance?
I have, sir.
And I have too, and it gets a little fuzzy in places.
It could use improvement, but I appreciate that being a starting point because that's certainly, it's something, it's a document that then you can work from. What are we concerned about that's not covered there? What is covered there that we really don't have an interest in?
And at this point, we would welcome, I think, the general public to review the Lawrence County Mine Ordinance, which we thought we'd use as a template. And then we're totally open to comments on that before we even form a committee.
Wonderful.
And I've done some research in Wisconsin and Minnesota on mining concerns. We're talking precious metal. And I've, you can go on, you can go online, you can watch these videos where the, where these folks are, the same concerns. The current concerns are property values, water quality, life, and you still have to read, you know, and then you got economics. It gets, there's a lot of emotion in there, but we, as I've said this before, we don't want to mess with our water. I mean, that's, I sit there and I look at someone in the desert, and they're, they're going to die if they don't have water. And they got a pound of gold or a gallon of water. I think we all know what the choice is going to be. So, I'm all for being transparent and taking care of our natural resources.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Do you have a desert story? Just kidding, Commissioner LaCroy.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I don't have any more questions from Bruce. I just got comments on the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bruce. I think, you know, thank Bruce for doing all your work, and you brought back to the commission what you want, you know, what you felt it was. You know, and I think this is a good process to bring forward. That was coming up as, to echo what Mark had said, is it's a foundation to start with. What I like about this is it's bringing forward, every group has an opportunity to make a comment and read through it, have 90 days, send it in. It's going to be in the records, and it's going to, the staff can adjust, view, see what the pros and cons of what can work, can't work. And it's all, all going to be brought back to a meeting. You know, we're presuming that we're eliminating public comment and public input, but we're not. When I was sitting down with this, when we first started going, and Deb's very well-versed on this from that argument, that you get a lot of people that say, I want, I want to be in here. I want to be in. I want to be involved, da-da-da-da-da. And by the time you do that, you have 40 people, and you can't get nothing done. And throughout last year, we got a lot of people saying, I want to be on this hard rock lot. Staff come back with a list of about 15 members that should be on it. And they should have this, they should have that, they should. It made it really complicated because then all of a sudden, we had other people saying, well, we want the youth in there. We want, want the tribes to be involved. This process, a 90-day period, gives every group the opportunity to read through what's the basis of it, come up with a good, solid outline of what they would like to see changed or give their thoughts to it, present it, and see if there's some changes. And then there's going to be public comment because that Lawrence County may not be perfect, but then we have all that in writing for review. I don't know about you guys, I like stuff in writing, and it's going to be public record. We can all go back and review it. And that's why I support this method of going forward, is not to eliminate public comment, but to try and get something done and in writing for everybody to see. And then work from that because you're going to get that in. That's my thoughts on how this process is going to, I think it's going to be very helpful because I, my problem for if we start selecting people, there's always going to be someone that feels that they're left out, didn't get their input. Where this is, we're going to gather it, and then we're going to address what had come to us in public meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner Drews, please.
Thank you. Bruce mentioned our resources, and I think, you know, every one of us that's set up here and staff agrees that our resources are critical to us and we need to protect those. And I think that'll be first and foremost in our minds as we move forward. I do think that using the Lawrence County ordinance as a template is a great start. That's been around for a long time. That's been massaged a number of times by Lawrence County because of necessary changes. It's been tested in court cases and adjusted from those again. So, instead of starting from basically scratch, I think that's a great place to start from. That's not to say that it's going to look totally like it when it's completed. But, and I do think there's going to be plenty of time and opportunity for the public, public to come in and express their opinions relative to it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Drews, any other discussion from the board, public? Yes, sir. Come on up, sir.
I totally hear what you're saying, and I guess I don't disagree at all. One thing I would ask, when it comes time for public input, some of us read the journal, some of us don't. Some of us listen to certain radio or TV stations. In the early proposal, there was a recommendation by me that when we get to the public input stage, that we use our public service announcement mechanisms to maximize the notice to people of the 90-day requirement to maximize the notice to people of the 90-day requirement. That if we could do a 15-second, 30-second PSA that could be done on radio and TV, something in the, something in the journal. But just to help, just to let people know this is coming. Thank you. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, say Bruce.
Commissioner.
In our pack, it's one of the items that we have, it's that letter that you drafted. And it talks about transparency and different dates for hearings so that we don't do it, try to do it where, you know, it's convenient for the general public and using the public service announcement. So I believe that those are... Thank you for putting that together and I think everybody's got to copy that and we're going to certainly try to follow those guidelines.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My turn? Well, I'll be in the chair last time. At first, I was with Bruce saying and thinking the same thoughts. Public opinion, we're missing out on a few areas that we thought, I thought we needed to cover. And then started listening to board members and the public and other people that have to do with hard rock mining. And then came up with the same conclusion as every one of these board members have talked about today. Number one, with having that committee, you still have agendas because I like both sides. I like to hear both sides, people for and against, and you come up with usually the best resolution or solution in the end. But we did start with a template as well and it was helpful. And I think when we came back, I think we had four things that we had to change. So it was, it was a good process. But I think this has even simplified it more where I agree with this after reading and listening to people from the public and our commissioners, that it's a good template and a 39, 30 and 90-day period for people to comment. Most of those people, Mr. Ellison, we have the list and usually they have a list. So Ms. Holly, this is what we've done before. So we hit everybody when we were in the mining ordinance for aggregate. We sent people notices that way. So we will also do newspaper and things like that. But one thing we have been is very open to the public, as you know, from the Planning Commission to hear. So at this point, I think this is a good place to start. And it's a good trial period of where we're going and how we get there. And again, I believe that the agencies and the people that need to be contacted for this, we'll make sure they're contacted. And if we miss anybody or you think we, we need to add that list to us that you think we might miss, it's okay to call Ms. Holly and we can, we can get that done. Or the people in the mining industry and stuff as well, just so we've got everybody covered, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That being said, do we have a motion?
So move.
So moved by Ross Connect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Board, we have Board of Adjustment and it doesn't start till 10:30. Do we want to move to some of the other items after? Number 16 through 20, see how far we get. No, we can't? Okay. So...
You have an executive session that you may be able to crank out in 15 minutes. Do you want to attempt that one now?
Yes.
Board, what is your wish?
Let's do that.
Is there a motion to go in an executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
And a motion for executive session, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Do you have a motion to come out of executive session?
Move to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve the chair's signature on the proposal for soil sampling for E. Coli at 4763 Greenfield Lane, Rapid City, South Dakota. I think that's all I needed.
Fair enough.
It's been a motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. Do we have the amount, did you say the amount?
No.
Up to...
To approve up to $1,100, $1,100 for soil sampling.
Okay. Then a motion is...
$1,500.
Sorry.
I stand corrected.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next, we're on number 15, Board of Adjustment. Mr. PJ.
Ma'am, you need to open up Board of Adjustment, please.
Motion to open Board of Adjustment. Moved by Drews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, PJ.
No problem. Item A and the only item on Board of Adjustment, variance 1821, for Jolly Lane Greenhouse. Tim Sim is the agent to reduce the minimum required side yard setback on the east property line from 10 feet to zero feet for setback. And the applicant needs some additional time to work with the city to vacate the platted setback. Usually setbacks aren't placed on plats, but this is a rather old plat and it is on there. And since it's in the city's jurisdiction, their plating jurisdiction, they have to do that vacation. They vacated the easement, but they neglected to vacate the setback. So it's just going to take them a little extra time. And the applicant is aware of that, of course, and is okay with the continuation. So the recommendation would be to continue variance 1821 to the April 2nd, 2019 Board of Adjustment meeting to allow the landowner time to work with the city of Rapid City.
So moved.
Been a motion by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to come out...
Motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Motion by DeSanto, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. PJ, consent agenda, please.
Sure. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and voted the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item B, minor plat, MPL 1903, for Sam Fisher, fiscal land surveying as agent, and approval's been recommended.
Is there anyone from the public who wished to remove item B from the consent agenda? Is there anyone from the commission that would like to remove item B from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Regular agenda items C through E. PJ, please.
Item C is layout plat, LPL 1904, to create lots 1 and 2 of Cosmos subdivision. The agent is fiscal land surveying and a representative is in the audience today for questions. The size of the property is 17.57 acres. This property is located around what is known as the Cosmos mystery area. And what they're looking to do is subdivide the property into lot 1, which would be 10.89 acres, and lot 2, which would be 6.22 acres. The purpose of the subdivision, from what we understand, is that the owners of the Cosmos mystery area are looking to purchase lot 2 and extend their existing parking lot. And here's an aerial picture of what it looks like today. It is own general agriculture. Access is off of Highway 16, then across a forest road with, has a special forest use permit. And then also the Cosmos Road District oversees and maintains the road. There are several existing easements because there is a telecommunications facility, basically a cell tower at the top of proposed lot 1. So as you can see on this proposed layout plat, the easements are going to stay in place. We did not receive any information or comments back from the people who oversee the cell tower. We usually take that as an approval, not necessarily an objection. But this is just the beginning of the process, so they have ample time to comment if they'd like. There are several structures on the existing property that is being vacated or being subdivided. One item of concern is a three-car garage, which is located over here by the western prop... Whoops, well, this is off, sorry. By the western property line. It is legal non-conforming for setback as it's indicated to be 6.1 feet from the property line. And on the proposal, they are requesting, it's required through the subdivision regulations, an eight-foot drainage and utility easement on the interior of all property lines. Now, if that was done, that would definitely create an issue for that structure in putting it 1 point, 1 foot and 11 inches into that setback. And talking with the agent, that what they're probably going to do is just request a six-foot easement on that property line. That's one way that they can overcome causing an issue for the landowner through this process. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. No items of significance concern came back. The Forest Service does support this request and has no objections. And they also wanted us to be aware that there is that special use permit that is in place and is not set to expire until December 31st, 2033. So we're not going to have any issues with that. Again, the road that comes in off of Highway 16 first feeds into the Forest Service. Forest Service is recommending that that road be maintained to Forest Service standards. Then after that, Cosmos Road District maintains the rest of the roadway. Forest Service would recommend, and so would staff, that it meet at least Pennington County highway standards for ordinance 16. And again, it's going to be up to the road district, so that's just what we want to put out into the public. For the purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision. With that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat, LPL 1904, with nine conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Do we have, Board Commission, do you have any questions for PJ before I ask the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
On the stipulations, the nine stipulations, can we add additional stipulations, PJ?
You can.
One I might suggest is that Forest Service suggests that the Cosmos Road be maintained to county highway standards, and I think that should be under a stipulation.
I'm not sure legally with a road district what we can do. Usually we don't get involved with road districts other than with the auditor creating them. The road districts, even when it comes to approach permits, the beginning, you know, where the road meets the driveway, the county highway department doesn't even approve those, a road district does.
Okay. And then the second item I was going to bring up is to... It's a special use permit that expires in 2033 and we don't know who the commission's going to be in 2033, but could we put a stipulation in there that if that expires, they technically have no legal access because we're already running in those issues? So I'd like to put some safety mechanisms, safety mechanisms. So if they sold that property, the other owner would know that that special use permit expires. They don't have legal access. So there's some wording that could ensure down the road that this has been addressed today and not in 2033.
Do you have a solution for that? Maybe PJ, that would work for what Mr. Ross Connect is going to?
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is I don't know what the Forest Service has in place to catch those. I know, I would think it's not much because some of those do fall into the cracks and it's usually up to the landowner.
Well, I've been working with Rodney Brown and we're going to look at seeing if these special use permits and 30-year easements can be recorded in a miscellaneous document. So that if they do a title search, which they normally do, they don't, if they're not recorded, they're not going to show up. And Rodney said that would really be, help the Forest Service if those special use permits, which are 20 years, and the easements, which are 30 years, could be recorded in a miscellaneous document related to that legal description.
And that'd be a great idea because then that would, like you said, pull up during a search. Remember, any conditions that are put on here are on for this landowner, not everybody in that subdivision that uses it. We could put in a condition that legal access needs to be maintained. It's one of those kind of understood things. But we do do, in special search situations, we do add those type of conditions in.
Yeah, that was just something that I thought that might eliminate future problems with other commissions.
I think if we just simply worded it that legal access to the subject properties are maintained.
And then maybe put the date when that legal access be maintained, the expiration on it somehow or something? So they know legal access must be maintained and then put an expiration on your legal access is whatever. So like you said, it's only for that owner, but maybe someone that was buying it or might do the search on the stipulations, anything like that work?
Well, my concern with putting the date on it is there's a lot of time between now and 2033. Things may change.
I was thinking. Maybe in the future, I think Commissioner Ross Connect, that's kind of where you're going is that maybe do we do it through the Forest Service? Because owners do change and some of that's personal responsibility on people. But I think there's a solution where you're going with the Forest Service of recording that and having that maybe then be able to put that in our stipulations. But I think that...
I told Rodney that I'd be happy to work with planning and zoning and Forest Service, see if we could have some kind of process for recording. He said those 30-year easements, he said they're not always recorded, but he said they certainly should be.
Okay. So at this point, PJ, go ahead and tell us on this issue, on the stipulation, what we should do.
Sure. If you'd like to add a condition, I'd recommend that it say that legal access is continually maintained in the subject property.
Fair enough.
Okay. So when we make the motion, you can make that motion and then add that stipulation to that motion when we're ready to make the motion. Sir? Okay.
That condition, oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
The condition will become most important as we go through the process. Nothing is, this doesn't really hold anybody accountable at this level, but it does give that direction to the landowner of what the, what the board is going to expect.
Right.
Thank you, PJ. Okay, the applicant in the audience? Your name, ma'am? Your name.
Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with fiscal land surveying and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I don't have any particular comments, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay. So help him with the motion, PJ, please.
So that would be to recommend approval of layout plat, LPL 1904, with 10 conditions.
Okay. That's your motion, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any other discussion? Anybody from the public? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help. Item D.
Good morning. Cassie Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item D is subdivision regulations, variance SV 1815. This is for Shiner Investment. Shane Shiner, Spurlet Consulting is the surveyor and the agent. They are in the audience today if you do have any questions about this. You guys have seen portions of this request previously. What they are proposing to do is divide these four mining claims into eight lots. Part of the approval for their preliminary plat, which they received in November of last year, was that they had to do some subdivision regulations variances with regard to the road that they are proposing to put to access these eight lots. What they are requesting to waive from the plating requirements is to allow the use of a 40-foot wide easement in lieu of a 66-foot wide right-of-way to allow the maximum grade of a road to be 15% for approximately 900 feet. They were requesting to allow an exception to not install guardrail on slopes with a slope greater than 4:1. They are no longer requesting that. Essentially, they have actually provided location for guardrails in places where it would be potentially hazardous. They have provided that information and are willing to install those guardrails. They are requesting to allow the angle between road intersections to be less than 75 degrees and allow a tangent between intersections to be less than 100 feet, to allow vertical curves to be less than 100 feet and to not perform percolation tests and provide soil profile hole information before plating. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. One item that I do want to note was from the county highway department. The county highway department said the roads in this development serve only the development and are therefore classified as local roads. Pennington County subdivision regulations define the requirements for local roads and not the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. A policy on geometric design of highways and streets. AASHTO is referenced in the subdivision regulations for minor and major arterials only and is not applicable in this development. So as I said, this is to fulfill a condition of their preliminary plat. A detailed explanation of the requested waivers should be in your guys' packet. And the Board of, or the Planning Commission did hear this at their last meeting. This was continued at the Planning Commission level a couple of times, mostly because of the guardrail discussion, which, as I said, they have provided a document showing where they are proposing to install guardrails, if I can find it. Right there, the yellow indicators up there are where they're going to install guardrails on the proposed new road. So staff did send this to the Planning Commission with two separate recommendations. So, staff did send this to the planning commission with two separate recommendations. Recommendation one was approval of a portion of the subdivision regulations variance to waive five of the plating requirements. And then there was also a second recommendation from staff for denial of a portion of the subdivision regulations to waive the exception to not install guardrails. What ended up happening at the planning commission was the planning commission did recommend approval of the portion of subdivision regulations variance 1815 to waive five of the plating requirements. They did not take action on staff's second recommendation because of the fact that they have agreed to install guardrails at these locations.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. Board, do we have some questions for Ms. Cassie?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinck.
What is a definition of a guardrail? Could they, if they were building the road and they ran in the boulders the size of a washing machine, could those boulders be placed? And would that be considered a guardrail?
I would have to look through and see if we have a definition of a guardrail in our subdivision regulations. I hear PJ looking.
I'm just curious, because when they say guardrail, I'm trying to figure out what this thing's going to look like and kind of get an overview of what a guardrail is.
And the applicant and the agent are in the audience today, so they might be able to provide some insight as to what they are planning to install there.
Okay. Is that okay if we, you want to?
Right.
Any other questions for Cassie before we ask the applicant up?
You know, they refer to those as roads, and in the areas that I've been in similar to this, I might say you could also refer to them as a driveway. Because when these folks buy these properties, it's basically their driveways go into their property, and I don't want people to can screw these as city streets or roads or basically driveways.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Any follow-up? Commissioner Roskinck?
Well, someone buys those lots, and if they want to take the risk of not putting a guardrail up, then that should be their prerogative. But, you know, once those lots sell and those driveways are on that lot, to me, there's some responsibility to the person that buys those for their safety concerns.
So, just a question. They already installed the guardrails?
No. This is the road that they're proposing. There is a road up there right now that is not the road that's going to remain, so the guardrails will be installed when this road is completed.
So, what happens is if you decide to take a stipulation off here, you can take stipulation. If you think this is a driveway, and you can ask Cassie or your staff, if you wanted to take a stipulation off that they, because the planning commission said they have to do drive, or guardrails, if this board decides that that stipulation wants to come off, you can recommend that at this time to take the guardrails and not have them installed on this, as you believe, driveway.
I'm not sure what the guardrail is, that's, you know, hold off.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. When this first come forward on the planning commission, I was sitting that month, and that discussion that Ron just talked about was highly discussed, whether it's a driveway, whether it's a road. And so, they went back to analyze where the troubled areas were, but that was one of the biggest discussions, was this is basically, as he said, is a driveway, and that's something, the planning commission at that point, when I was on there for that month, they sent them off to reevaluate, and they must have came back with that recommendation of spots where they want, where they felt that they could use them at. But I just wanted to acknowledge that what Ron's saying was discussed at the planning commission.
Thank you. I believe if you're selling the lots and it's not just your house, then you're going to affect the safety of the public if it's a driveway. We can call it a driveway or road, but the bottom line is if you're having four or five people come on the driveway, and there's going to be a safety factor in those areas, is where I was getting it, then they should probably put those guardrails in. They won't be there, these four or five people driving down this road will be there. So, if it was one person and he owned the land, I think that's a little bit different for me, just me personally, but if there's lots being sold and people's safety, I think that's why I would keep the guardrails.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I think it'd be a good idea to hear from the applicant, because I think this is a moot point. I believe they've already planned on putting the guardrails in in the first place.
Okay. But if they could save money, I think maybe they wouldn't have to. Commissioner DeSanto. Okay. Applicant, Mr. Shiner, and Kale, please. Maybe you can clear some of our stuff up, Mr. Shiner.
Yeah, Shane Shiner and Kale. Yeah, good discussion on the guardrail. Kind of the way it came down to was, you know, we were getting continuances and things going on and on, so we finally knuckled under and said, yeah, we'll do it just to move the project. But like you said, my opinions right along with Ron's is they're a driveway, and I'm not, I mean, I would say that you don't need them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's Kale McAdo. I own Spurlet Consulting. I'm the engineer of record. I'm the one who actually laid out the locations in yellow that you see up on the map, and those were essentially picked just from a standpoint of turning movements, stopping movements. If you looked at the most, kind of, if you assess kind of the level of risk of where you could have issues, that's where I arrived at those locations for guardrail. And I call them guardrail, and whether that ends up being an obstruction similar to the boulders or physical guardrail, I guess, I just think that we need some protective measure at those areas.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions for the applicant on the five, or the six stipulations? Okay. I, do you have one? You can go first. Okay. I just have, can you tell me Kale on the performing no percolation tests and what we talked about, somewhat of septic and different stuff on that property, so everybody has the same understanding of why we're just doing the profile holes and why that's?
Sure. We've made a request to waive the percolation test and the profile hole results. That comes at the building bed application stage, and I think it's very typical of subdivision staff that you ask for variance, not to provide the perk test and the soil profile holes. Subsequently, the owner and I, Shane, have sat down, and we've identified, you know, areas on this property where, like, this would be a good area. And we've kind of, you know, while we don't know where the houses are specifically going to land on these lots, because we're not building the houses, we can identify areas where we believe we're going to be able to provide a drain field for the individual lots. They're going to happen down in lower elevations. You see that these types of areas, you've got lesser slopes, greater possibility for having deeper soil conditions and probability of installing conventional drain field systems. Now, we've also discussed setting aside easements so that you could have a drain field that would occur on one of these side lots. Now, those easement locations you'd see on the final plat application, clearly the end lot over here has a building site that lands in this location. It has got significant, it's a little bit off the map, but there's a big meadow down in this area. So, these are locations where the drain fields are going to go on these. It hasn't been the intention of our client to go forward, and I know that there was some discussion on holding tanks. There's been, from our perspective, there's no, we haven't pursued that option. We've been pursuing the option of providing either the evapotranspiration mound, which is kind of the nuclear option, because it's more expensive, or combining up and providing conventional drain fields onsite, but drain fields that may occur on different lots.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, do we have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Roskinck to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E.
All right. Item E is along those same lines. Item E is the second reading of rezone 1811 and comprehensive plan amendment 1810, also for Shiner Investment, Shane Shiner. This is their request to rezone 29.02 acres from general agriculture district to low-density residential district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive to low-density residential district. The board did approve the first reading of rezone 1811 on March 5th with the condition that a warranty deed is registered with the register of deeds, and the comprehensive plan amendment CA 1810 was denied. Since that meeting, the surveyor and the applicant have submitted an affidavit of notice, which should be in your guys' packet, that they intend to file with the register of deeds. That would then be recorded as a miscellaneous document notifying surrounding neighbors, potential property owners of the heliport across the road.
Thank you. Questions? Board? Motion? Jay?
Jay Alderman with the State Attorney's Office. I was just given a copy of the affidavit notice, and I think this does a good job of putting folks on notice. It'd be similar to a covenant, in essence. It records against the legal description of the property, so anybody that has an interest in that property would presumably see that being noticed, and that's what this is attempting to accomplish.
Thank you.
So, I think this is, this is even better and better coverage than simply putting something on a warranty deed, if you can even do that. That's a question that's up in the air. But this, well, I understand the register of deeds will file it as a miscellaneous document, much like covenants running with the land. One-time notice, it's there permanently. I think it's worded well. I have one question, and maybe the developer can answer this, is obviously the purpose of this is to notify any prospective purchaser of one of these lots after they're subdivided of the existence of the helipad across the street, or across the highway. And it lists the current legal description of the property that's being sought to be subdivided. Maybe you can answer this for me. Down the road, once you do the subdivision, will this still attach to those subdivision lots, so that if somebody did do that research, or a title company was doing a warranty deed, they would run across this? That would be my only concern, because if it didn't, then that would somewhat defeat the purpose of the notice to prospective buyers. And that would be buyers from you, or even down the road, from somebody who had bought from you who transfers interest.
So, Kale, how do we accomplish that?
Yeah, so it'll follow the plat, because the, it'll end up in formerly on the plat. So, let's say that we're talking about lot one, and we can pick out any of these, let's say the Bellevue track. You're going to carve lot one out of it. The description is lot one of this subdivision, but it says formerly the Bellevue track. So, there's always a chain, because you always have a formerly in the description of the plat. So, when you do that research, it's going to keep showing up as the formerly.
That makes sense, Jay.
Yeah, that's the only thing. I just wanted to make sure that that's an understanding. We're on record. We're being videotaped. It's part of our records, and understanding that this document will be recordable against not only the legal description as it presently exists, but as it will naturally change over time. It will always, those overtime changes will always refer back to, and this will be in the chain of title.
That's good.
Madam Chair. So, Jay, on the warranty deed, a lot of those warranty deeds that I've read, and after the legal description, they'll say subject to encumbrances, easements. At that point, could you not put subject to the terms and conditions found in miscellaneous book?
I don't see why you couldn't. A lot of times, it's, you know, to reversionary clauses and so forth, but-
If you put that on the deed, it would carry over from owner to owner, and title companies would pick it up.
You could definitely do that. That would be in addition to this, but this is, I guess this satisfies what I was hoping to see in the form of a covenant, that this is in that chain of title.
Right.
And I don't, as long as that's there, and it refers back to any change of that original description, you're covered. And this is a clean way to do it, and this is something that people would normally see, like a covenant or some other miscellaneous document.
Okay. Discussion or follow-up? Nope?
One other question, I don't know. We, like you said, this will follow on, and actually, we've recorded this already as well, so.
Thank you.
So, what may, would be helpful for the record is to have a copy of the recorded document that has the register of deeds stamped and provide it to Planning and Zoning for their records.
Yeah, she said was going to mail it back.
On the final plat? That's usually what you do anyway, wouldn't you? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Roskinck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 16 is items from chair or commission members. Item A, speaker request forms. Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I bring this up to the commission for discussion, not that we have a problem or anything like that, is I just believe that a speaker request form for the meetings, I think, adds structure. It's not to, I'm sure somebody's going to say, you're trying to limit the speech to the commission or talking to us, or something like that. I think we all know that the commission, if somebody has something to say, can do it at any time. So, I brought this up, and the reason, and I had to holly look at some of the numbers, you know, throughout 2018, we had 197 planning items that we discussed, 573 items altogether. So, I mean, that's how many more times for conversation. We had 35 meetings, including regular meetings and board of equalization, and special meetings and so forth. So, my reason for bringing this up is I think the structure would help add structure to how we run our meetings. Is the request form perfect? Is the two that are in the packet perfect right now? I don't think so. I think there's some changes that could be made. I can address them a little bit later on. But one of the things that kind of triggered this for me is, I can still remember one meeting, you know, for us, you know, we do 36 meetings a week, a year here. And we get used to how things are going, but what happens if another person comes in and they don't know the process of what's going on, and we're in an emotional moment in the meeting, and they don't know? I distinctly remember we had a lady one time who missed making a comment on her item because she didn't know she was supposed to raise her hand. That's where I'm looking at with this. I think a speaker request form helps customer service. The thing is, is we have all these items, as I just mentioned, of people who've put in hard work and time into bringing their stuff forward to the commission, and they're looking for some structures of what, how things should go. And that's the reason why I brought it forward. I guess my thought on this, and I sent this to John once for the planning, for the compensation committee, I just wanted to plant the seed in your guys' mind. You know, if it's a weed, we'll throw it out, or call Scott Guffey, but if it's a flower, we'll add water and sunshine to it. But I'm looking for some of your, the commission's ideas on this. Is there something that they see could be beneficial to us, as I do? Or is there some changes they want to do? That's where I'm looking for the commission, that's why I brought it up.
Commissioner Roskinck?
I agree with Lloyd. We're going to have some open forums here regarding the mining ordinances in the future, and I think this would be a really good, get this implemented before that happens, so that we got some structure and organization.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I think that when it comes to structure, it's a great idea. However, and especially when it comes to the mining ordinance discussions that we're going to have, because of the number of people that we have coming forward to discuss. However, in a regular meeting, I feel that a lot of times people come up and speak, once they've heard other discussion, it sparks something in their mind, and they decide, you know what, I'd like to bring something up now that I've heard that. Where if we have in all of our meetings, these speaker cards, people are not going to feel free if something pops up in their head during this discussion, which even for me, quite often, I mean, I may look at something in the packet over the weekend, come here and not even think about that I'm going to have anything to say, and then somebody might bring something up, and I go, whoa, wait a minute. That brings something to mind. So, I'm, I like the- So I'm, I like the idea, I like the structure, especially, like, again, I'm going to reiterate when it comes to when we've got 100 people in here wanting to talk. But I think in our regular meetings, I think that it will prevent people from wanting to get up when something pops into their head.
Commissioner DeSanto, just a couple of things on that. From being on the city council, even if they have one or two, it's just something that is structured, that actually I've seen has worked really good because of that, because then they know when to speak. And we say you have speaker request forms, then you explain what a speaker request form is. And if you do miss your item, it's only courteous of this board to go back and reconsider, which we have done before at the city council if someone missed it. The other thing is, is when you have a speaker request, it also shows people that, okay, Joe Miller, you signed a speaker request for number 14, go ahead and come up. Then it shows anybody in the public, sitting in the audience, that, okay, this is when I probably need to speak, because he filled out a speaker request. It will be explained to people for a while, I think, before we start using them, and once we have started, what those mean, until people kind of got the routine. And once they do, I see it's very, works very, very well in any place I've ever seen when they had speaker requests. So even for us, during those big meetings, it's worked very well. But it works for small ones, too, just so the public knows kind of when they can speak and how they get to speak. I've seen it work very well, just myself. And I like it, because I don't want to miss anybody as a Commissioner that needs to speak. That's the bottom line with that structure, I think, that Mr. LaCroy has put forth, and I have suggested before as well, because of that. But this is the second time we have brought this up, Mr. LaCroy, and I think it's a good idea, so...
Madam Chair. On the controversial issues, there'll probably be a number of meetings, and so if somebody wants to, they think of something after the fact, I would think that they'd have plenty of time at the next meeting.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just to clarify, it's, I believe it adds good structure for the meeting and so forth. If you look at, just say, how the meeting went today, we had no problems today. But if the chair had the speaker request form and sitting right next to her person, you know that person's there. Instead of, you get into that groove of just going, and then you go, got to ask, is there anybody who wants to speak? It's just a proper structure is what I'm looking at. I've never seen speaker request form, you know, people that have them implemented, prevent somebody from speaking. Where it did, the only time it did is when they wanted to speak on something that wasn't pertaining to the subject that the Commission or that board's talking about. Then it was saying, no, that's public comment, you do that at that other end. It's just, to me, it's also a sign of respect for the person in the audience. They filled it out, you have their information, they're called on when it's there, they feel respected, they come up. If something happens, as Mr. DeSanto said, for his discussion, a Commissioner always, the Commissioner always has the prerogative to ask that person back up at any time. So, I mean, if they come out there and they wave, I want to comment, Mr. DeSanto can go, I think he has something to say, I'd like to hear it, and the board's okay with that, and we do it. As I said, I'm not bringing this up because we have a problem. You know, usually, that's when we get something that's brought up, is we felt something was going bad, and we need to fix something right now. This has just added something I wanted for us to discuss, to be able to put some structure in, to add some respect to our meetings and to the people, the customers that we serve. And that's the biggest thing, is the customers that we serve. You know, they spend a lot of time, and they want to know what to expect when they come to this meeting, that they're going to be heard. And if anybody else has something that they want to say against them, they'd at least like to know at the very beginning what's going to happen.
And if you read this, I like it, too. Commissioner LaCroy, the city one, because it says, "Items on the agenda may be brought up." Items not on the agenda, so it also gives you another instruction. Items not on the agenda may be brought up under general public comment. So it gives you some direction there for, basically, this is about customer service. And to speak on the item not listed on the agenda, please indicate area of interest. So it kind of, and then it also says at the bottom, please turn in this form to county, into the county secretary seated beside the city attorney. So it gives you instructions in case somebody's like, okay, so I don't know how to do this. Once they see someone brought up a item. I think once it gets implemented, like I said, it's going to take a little bit, because we haven't done this in the county, but it's pretty simplified once you get it going. Does that make sense, just from seeing how it works and people in the audience watching the process? So it is good structure, and I believe with Commissioner LaCroy, it's good customer service, or in this case, constituent service, for them to speak. And as a Chair, Gary could probably speak to this. I don't know if you guys had speaker request forms, but it recognizes something sometimes when we keep moving on the dais here, D-E-F, we might miss to say it to anybody from the public, and I think even Commissioners do that. So it's a good reminder that the public's here, and they want to speak as well. And we have these forms, and then we also have people that, like Lloyd said, might raise their hand, or... So it's a, I think it's a win-win for both sides.
Depending on, Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
You know, I brought, I gave notice at our last meeting that we bring this forward, just to give everybody a chance to think about it and stew over it. At this meeting, Holly and the staff put up some recommendations. One of the things I, for the speaker request forms, would like to add something that I'm available to speak if needed. Not saying that I want, you know, I want to speak, but I'm here. Some of the regulations that I see that need some work on this probably is, I would like something like that added. And also, you know, through some of the terms, it says you need to hand it in at the beginning of the meeting, which I think is not a good practice, because at 10:30, we start planning. So I think if you hand, I think those two things could be worked and worded a little bit different, because you don't want someone to go, oh, I'm here at 9:30, I can't turn one in. But yet, planning commission starts at 10:30, and people from traveling in know they got to be here at 10:30 if they're planning. So I think we could reword some things like that. So I'm not sure where everybody's at, but what I would recommend to do is let me and the staff work with a couple, two proposals for speaker requests, and maybe bring them back if the Commission so desires.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm glad that Lloyd just brought that up. That was one of my major concerns, was turning these, if you got to feel like you got to turn it in at the beginning of the meeting, and you haven't shown up until 9:30, or quarter to 10:00, or 10:25, or whatever, that you feel like you can't turn it in. So, yeah, if we can change that language, then I'd lean more towards no problem. But that language would have to be addressed.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Listener.
Some of the videos I've been watching on these other states regarding mining ordinances, and they get a pretty large audience, they certainly can fill one of these out if they want to get up and speak for three or five minutes. Conversely, they can, there's a card, they were hard cards, and on the back, they could put comments. So if they didn't want to get up and speak, they would have a name and an address and their comments, and then someone from the Commissioner's office would review those and get back with them if they didn't want to actually get up and speak.
Nice. Commissioner Drews, you haven't spoken on this issue.
I agree with what all's been said. My biggest concern was really on when you turn them in.
Yeah. I agree with the process, so that brought up a good point. So you would, if you was, you were Chair, and you would start the process, and you would say, we have speaker request forms in the back, turn them in to Holly, because that's what they do at the city. But then Commissioner DeSanto brought up a good point. Once we're past that item, I mean, we can reconsider stuff here. But if we're voted on something, do we go back five items? I mean, you guys could look at that, but how many times do we say, fill out a speaker request form? Do we say it at the beginning? Do we say it at the, before you speak, you know, on planning and zoning? Do we speak, do we say it on consent? Do we say it on regular agenda items? Fill out your, how many times do you need to say it? And I think at the beginning, we're going to say it more than the end. Does that make sense? Because you're going to, you're going to change the process, so people that've been here over and over again that have never done that. So it might be a little bit different to start, and then once people are getting it, then we'd be like, okay, let's do it twice, or we'll probably figure out some of that, how we change it. But it's a good starting point of what you're doing, Commissioner LaCroy, with the staff. Let's at least try it. And guess what, guys? If it doesn't work, that's, we just say, you know, this process isn't our best anymore, let's dissolve it, so...
Gotcha.
Madam Chair.
Just a suggestion. So go ahead, Commissioner LaCroy.
So I'm thinking the consensus is to do, come up with two, and bring it back to the next meeting. That actually gives six weeks of public, seeing that it was on the agenda, if they have concerns, they can come forward. But I think that, is that consensus that I gather?
Commissioner LaCroy, I would say, don't put a timeline on it. Just see if it works, or if it doesn't. I think you're going to find that it's going to take a bit for it to keep moving, and for people to get it, because sometimes it might take a couple of months, it might take three months. It's going to mess up a little bit, because depending on how many times a person, Holly might come in here in January, and then, and then another time in September, or whatever, meaning the process from what we're doing is, might change a little bit by then, so...
I wasn't putting a timeline. I was saying...
I thought you said, I apologize.
Six weeks from the time I mentioned it, before we actually make a vote on whether we're going to do the speaker requests or not, that's what I was talking, I wasn't, yeah.
I got you.
Okay.
I wasn't putting a timeframe on trial of the speaker request forms. The form itself, we need to agree on a form, and I suggest you bring in two forms back.
In six weeks?
No, next week, our next Commission meeting.
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Okay.
But since I mentioned it, it's been six weeks.
Thank you, I apologize.
So I was just saying that we've had six weeks of public...
Input on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. My brain wasn't going there very well, was it? So Commissioners, do we have a motion to Lloyd's effect that he could work with the staff and bring back the process in which maybe we could start, or that we can start this process on speaker request forms?
I don't think a motion is needed on this. I think you can just go ahead. The consensus is, go ahead and figure out a couple of cards, and then present it to us on the 2nd. That's when the motion would be taking place.
Is the board okay with that? Without a motion? Commissioner LaCroy?
I'm looking at...
Holly?
Holly. Would you prefer a motion? Would you feel more comfortable with a motion to bring back two for the record?
Yes, please.
I would move that Lloyd work on two separate options for speaker request cards.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by DeSanto, and second by Ross Connect, to work on the speaker request form process.
Can I ask the board for direction in yielding someone's time to another group, or a larger group? Do you, do you want that as part of the guidelines? We had that issue during the mining hearings, and I'm trying to get my brain wrapped around this from the practical implementation part of this. I feel like I'm going to be the one running around and disrupting the Chair and the Vice-Chair trying to get speaker request forms all together, and how are we going to know who wants to yield and who doesn't? And those are the things that are just running in my head while we're starting to work on this process. And curious if the board wants us to address that, or if you want to move forward and that's not allowed anymore.
So when we had it in the city, what happened was, you had speaker requests, and let's say Jay, and PJ, and Mark all had speaker requests. And then you'd call Jay Alderman, and Jay would say, I yield my time. So then to PJ, so then that speaker request is gone, and then you put six minutes, and he's not speaking anymore. Because if he filled it out, that's different. If they didn't fill out any speaker requests, that's going to be a little bit harder, but either way, that's not, there's not going to be a process in that. It's going to happen when, hopefully, they follow that process, and then it works. And usually, even during city council meetings, if I recall, Commissioner LaCroy, we did have people that would go onto the side. They would be respectful, they'd go to the side and hand the speaker request for, in your case, to you. And it wasn't disruptive. We didn't have it a whole lot, if I recall, Commissioner LaCroy, but we did have it once in a while. It works, just so the bottom line is that they know they have to hand it to Holly Hennies. Most people aren't going to run through the middle of the...
Are the applicants exempt?
No.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Yeah, let's give a little bit of clarification. Speaker request form is the basic one that you talked about. What you just brought up is a scenario of a special meeting. At that point in time, we've got the structure of a speaker's request form. At a meeting that we have that many people, we'll be able to see. Chair and Commission makes a decision at that point in time, whether they should yield, be able to yield, that's a good question, but it's a very rare occasion, and it's something the Commission should talk about before that meeting starts, to how that works. But the structure of a speaker request form is there. So at the beginning of the meeting, they're going to say, we have an item that looks like we have 30 people that want to speak, two groups. I mean, that Commission at that point in time will make that. I think we're just talking about the basic structure here.
I guess that's where I'm still not understanding, is if you want it used, like, during regular agenda items, like today, if someone wants to come up and speak on the motor grader, am I to hit the three-minute button for that item? And they should have filled out a speaker request form for that? Or are we strictly talking special scenarios? Those are the details in my...
That's something that we're going to work on.
Okay.
I mean, as far as like the three-minute type thing, and moving this over...
Special meetings are something that you set the rules during, you know, set the rules up, Commissioner LaCroy's right, during that meeting. Like, if mining today was going to be 30 people, it wouldn't be a special meeting. But if they wanted to yield, they could still use it during that time. So we still need to set up some kind of rule for that, because it's not only for special meetings. But bottom line is, a lot of times, if it's a special meeting, the word "special" is in there, we have ground rules, because we know there's going to be 50 people on each side, Ms. Holly. But I still think yielding your time in case it is a, not a special meeting, and we see sometimes 20, 30 people, we probably want to see if we're seeing that item, or the Chair, or somebody recognizes there's that many people to speak on that item, we can say that. I think that's just going to be more seeing how many people are on a certain item, that it's, that we can say that, as hopefully, a Chair can recognize that, or one of the board members. Chair, I think we have, looks like 40 people on this, maybe we should announce about yielding your time if you'd like, so...
As I said, this is just the structure part.
Yeah, but it's a nice discussion.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, sorry, Madam Chair.
You're good, Commissioner LaCroy. You have a passion for this.
It's just the structure part. I think we've all got a lot of things that we could, different things, that's why I said 36 meetings, they're in different 36 times. So, I mean, we're going to have different scenarios, that's why I say it's up to the Commission. I know we're going to have problems, even with the Commission. Do we want three minutes? We'll leave it, we'll bring one back with blank, our three-minute, and then we'll have that discussion. I think that's a big thing for some people, they think three minutes isn't long enough, but in reality, it's a long time. But you can always request for more time, and that type of thing. But we'll come up with something and come forward.
Commissioner LaCroy, I think here's a good idea, and I'm going to probably do it myself, go to a city council meeting, and let's see how it works, because that'll kind of show us, or watch one on TV, and then it'll kind of show him, show us how it works a little bit. And then also call the city and see what they're, how they do their process, and how they got to where they at. Because a lot of the people working in the office, they're very good at explanations on different things like that, and I don't, I don't see that that would be a problem. It's a good way to, for me, I always like to look at, again, or in this case, what that process is, and you might see something that comes to mind when you're watching it, that Lloyd and Holly and the staff... that comes to mind when you're watching it, that Lloyd and Holly and the staff could, you know, might be a good suggestion for this process for us, that might need to change.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to address Holly's second question, should the applicant have to fill out a comment card? I don't think we can do that. I think the applicant always has the right to speak, no matter what.
Understood. I was just thinking, if there was another representative there for them, or how would we structure that to know?
Well, I would think they're, the applicant, or their representative, their direct representative, you know, I mean, it's listed on their deal there, so.
But by law, actually, the applicant, if, if we did not, I'll tell you up straight, if, if we're doing a regular meeting, and the applicant, we will always have people speak, because that's what this board does. But by law, the applicant during a, a meeting does not legally, we do not legally have to let the public speak. Am I correct, or?
No, we have to let the applicant speak.
Nope.
Only members of the body actually are a part of conducting the business.
Really?
But our, well-
Tradition is, we always let information be shared.
That's, that's, well, excuse me. That's one of the reasons why I asked that we put available for questioning.
Yes.
If they have any, if you have any questions. Because a lot of times, the applicant may not want to speak.
True.
No.
Only if you want me to.
And sometimes, Mark, that's why I said, sometimes, Mark Shock might not have a speaker request, and it looks like all the speaker requests done, and then he raises his hand. We're gonna let Mark come up. Does that make sense? So just because you didn't, like I said, it might spark something in one of the, one of the, uh, people from the public. And most of the time, that's what I liked. It sparked somebody that, that wasn't really gonna speak on anything. And then they came up and said, okay, you know, I didn't fill out a speaker request, can I say something? You let him speak.
Gotcha. All right.
Looks good. Okay. So we have a motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Clarification on use of point of order. Roberts rules of order, Commissioner La Croix.
You know, originally, thank you, Madam Chair, I brought this up because, uh, tell you the truth, I, and I told, I told Gary about this at the beginning of the meeting. Our first meeting of, of the year, uh, we accidentally missed an item, and, and Gary goes, point of order, and y'all jump, and we thought we did something wrong. And the whole point of order was, is just to stop us where we're at, and to reflect, and to see where we're at. And that, so that's, that was my thought process. Wanted to ask Holly to put this on, on the agendas, to, maybe it could be used in a less abrasive way, but yet still do the purpose. But what I liked is that, is Holly gave me this, the sheet that we, cheat sheet that we use for parliamentary procedures. And often, if you don't study them, or use them enough, like me, you don't retract them. So, uh, that's what was nice. So as I was reviewing this, you know, my, my original thought on the point of order was to give explanation, maybe we could use it a little different, to where if we're on the subject in a meeting, and we start drifting off, a person could use it, point of order, to just back in. And I'd always use it as, uh, uh, someone said something that was offensive, or is way out of line, or so, you know, that's what it's kind of been used for. But I, since that time, I, I kinda looked over a little bit more. And I think what, what I'm looking for more of, I don't know about the commission, is just to recognize that, if you go down on your list, it says, uh, "objective consideration of, of this questioning." Uh, what, it says, "to do this, to object to considering sound or undiplomatic or improper matter," I guess that's what it'd be, is if you start drifting off onto a different subject, or the whole conversation does, how do you get drawn back in? Uh, so you would say, I'd, I'd object to consideration of this questioning, I guess. We get some weird wording around some of this stuff.
Commissioner La Croix, I think when Gary did it, it says, "object to the procedure or to personal affront." Um, object to the procedure, so it, it is correct. Um, we just were using it back in the old days, um, old days, like fifteen years ago. We were using it for, to bring people back to where they needed to be, and keep on subjects. So I think, um, you could do point of information, you could, or point of privilege. Uh, Madam Chair, could we, you know, we missed, we missed something, if we want something to be more, um, friendly? Does that make sense?
Well, as I was, as I was going through this-
So I think you did it right, it's just, just the way you did it, sir. Because we were used to it.
This is more informational than anything.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm not trying to say anybody's doing anything wrong, or how to do things. I just, was just trying to look at some different ways to say, how can we get ourselves to, we all keep an eye on each other. And, and sometimes we get emotionally charged in these meetings, to where we got a heavy subject matter, and we're, we're all emotional on something. And once in a while, we need someone to stop us.
Hopefully, I stop you usually, but.
That, that, that's the whole point of this. And I just thought, originally, I always thought the point of order, in the last couple of years, it's always been thought of as, uh, abrasive, or somebody's doing it. And it's not.
No.
It's really a, a point to make you stop what you're doing, and take a breath, and go, okay, uh, maybe we shouldn't be going there.
Right.
Or something. And so, I just wanted to have the other commissioners say, if I happen to say point of order, or something, I'm not doing it to be aggressive, or in a angry manner. It's just, maybe it's a point in time to stop, cool down a little bit, and rethink things. Along with that, some of the procedures of that is, is if someone, as you can see in here, if you call point of order, uh, you can interrupt the speaker when you're doing it. That's probably where it usually gets more offensive. But you know what I'm saying? Um, there's no second needed, no debate. But I think on the other thing is, uh, the chair makes a ruling. Whether, the chair can ask for clarification, or make a ruling whether point of order's in or out. Uh, if it's a disagreeable one, you can challenge. I, you get down to hear the ruling of the chair, you can challenge the ruling of the chair. So there is options, when things start getting emotional and heavy, that we can do. And I think I'll keep another one of these here, just in front of me. But I mean, I, I just think it's good for us to review. We're do, nothing, again, nothing's, we've, I don't think we're doing anything wrong. It's just something to, uh, keep in mind, and, um, how to keep, uh, our meetings running, um, with a structure, and, and making us more aware.
Thank you, Commissioner La Croix. Any other questions on that, or comments? Not, thank you, Commissioner La Croix, for bringing that up. Well, let's see. Speaker request, we are on item seventeen. Ms. Holly Hennies, Waters of the United States, request for comments.
Yes, Commissioners, um, in your packet, you have, uh, a lot of information on the new proposed Waters of the U.S. rule. Um, Brittany is here, she's probably well more versed in this than I am, if you have any more specific questions. The commission in the past has taken, um, a position of, uh, opposition in regards to the proposed rules under the Obama administration. Um, President Trump, I'm not even sure what the right word is, but vetoed it, or put a halt to it, um, and asked for new proposed revised rules. So that's what you have in front of you. Um, the comment period is, runs until April fifteenth. And I wanted to bring this forward, so the board could think about it. And if you do wish for the Pennington County to take a position on that, we have time to draft something, and bring it back to the next commission meeting for your approval. Um, my understanding is, this is, the revised rules are a good thing. Um, I know Senator Rounds has taken a position of support on it. I have not had a chance to call Governor uh, Gnome's office to see what their position is. Um, but at this point, I guess I will stand for direction of the commission.
So, um, I wanna keep calling you Commissioner Hennies. Um, Ms. Holly, so we did put in, for information, uh, comments, and we had our chair sign it. Can you tell us about what we signed for last time, and?
Um, I believe it was in two thousand fourteen and two thousand seventeen, is when the last proposals were done. Um, it was a lot of background information on Pennington County and our stormwater, um, plan. But at that time, it was a position of opposition against the expansion of the Clean Water Act.
Yes, ma'am.
This, my understanding, is they have clarified and given better definition to what types of waters will fall under regulation. Um, so I guess it would be my suggestion that the commission support this new ruling. Um, but I guess I would like some additional time to do some further research, to make sure that South Dakota, everybody's kind of all on the same page in, in doing so.
So Commissioner Hennies, or Commissioner, I said it again. Um, Ms. Hennies, can you have maybe something drafted of what kind of resolution, if this board would like to do that again, of where you want us to go?
Absolutely. If that is the direction of the commission, I will work with staff, and put some comments together, and bring it back to the next commission meeting for final approval.
Anybody have objection to that?
No.
Do you want some kind of motion with that?
Please.
What would you like that motion to be, Ms. Holly?
Uh, if it's the wish of the commission to draft comments in relation to the Waters of the U.S. in support of the revised definitions.
There are a motion in a second?
That would be my motion.
Motion by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by La Croix, to bring that forward. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment, um, a privilege to thank Ms. Holly for everything she does for our board. Um, she does a lot of work for this commission, and everything you do for us, you and Ms. Joan. Um, we couldn't make it without you most of the time. Um, you look up many informational items, and, um, you and Joan do these agendas every two weeks. Um, I know I call you all the time for information, and, um, boy, does she get back to you quick. So, um, I appreciate you and everything, uh, you have done for our board, and me, since I've been a commissioner, Ms. Holly, and Ms. Joan, so.
You are very welcome.
That, thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, guys. Um, number eighteen is, uh, if you could give us some information on Rapid City Public Library liaison position, Ms. Holly?
Yes, Commissioners, our last liaison resigned from the position. I did go through the traditional steps of advertising for a replacement. Um, we did not receive any interested applicants. This has been a position that we have, um, had low interest in the past. So I wanted to ask the board for clear direction, if you would like to revisit that liaison position into a different, um, structure, or if you would just simply like me to keep advertising, and see if we are successful in finding someone interested.
Commissioner, any suggestions?
I think we take the bull by the horns, and just make a commission liaison.
Did you just volunteer?
I guess so.
Are you okay with that?
Get an alternate, too.
Do we have a motion? Um, who would like to be the alternate for the, um, library board? Looks like me.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Just, just for discussion. I, I seen that one of her, Holly's recommendations of maybe staff should be, uh, assigned to it. Kudos to Mr. DeSanto for stepping up, because I was just gonna, uh, personally, I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I was gonna say that maybe a staff should sit in for the rest of the year, and next year it'd be a, an appointed position.
Thanks, Lloyd, for letting me out of that. Yep, I agree.
I, I don't agree, but.
The only reason why I suggest something like that is, uh, number one, it gives our staff a little chance to see what we do, and some of ours, well, you do plenty more, but.
I think I have it down, sir.
You'll be able to go upstairs to the library, and see all the kids, and things going on. No. I just, that, that, that's my thought, because it's all of a sudden come up, and I think, uh- It's just a suggestion, is that maybe staff should do it till the first of the year, and then it'd be an assigned.
Commissioner La Croix, I respectfully disagree. I think DeSanto, um, being in there, there's a lot of things that this board needs to know, not that a la, another liaison couldn't do that. But it should be a big concern of, that's like four hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, and we should be well informed on that, and a commission and, uh, person that goes there every, um, week, or every, or every week, every month, um, I think would be a positive. And I would be willing to be the, um, the alternate on that, if DeSanto still wants to be the liaison.
I knew you'd step up. No.
He's, he's, he stepped up, I'm helping.
I thought I saw Candy raising her hand back there, too.
So, if that's okay, any other, do we have a motion? DeSanto, you wanna make that motion?
Can I make that motion?
Yes, you can.
Then I make the motion that we assign a commission liaison, and an alternate, um, yearly for this. I, I just feel like, we're spending money to advertise for this, and, and that's crazy. Well, let's just get it done.
Yes. So, and the motion be DeSanto's?
I'll second.
And I'll, I'll be the, the beginning liaison for this year.
Be a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Gary, would you like to go first on number eighteen, or Ms. Holly?
That, that first year doesn't need to be part of that motion, then. That Mark was trying to get put in there.
I think we're keeping you till you're gone, Mark. I'm kidding. Okay.
First year, exactly.
Holly, do you have some things you wanna report on, or?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Well, really, uh, the report on the legislative, uh, actions, I mean, it really boils down to, uh, probably the thing that it would impact Pennington County the most, is the bills that were put in, uh, right at the end by the governor, uh, to help recover cost, uh, when we have, uh, essentially, uh, writing. Um, and, and this is all aimed at the pipeline coming through South Dakota. And so, those, those bills really take a lot of the, uh, monetary pressure off of counties, uh, potentially. Doesn't mean that it's definitely all gonna be gone, or washed away, if something does happen. But, uh, these bills go a long way in, uh, helping to, uh, make it so that it's feasible for, uh, counties, uh, where something like this may happen, uh, can take care of the cost. The, what the state law basically said before, is that a, a county where this would be happening, uh, it would cost them, they would have to put up a cost of up to two mil. Uh, well, two, two mil, we only have six mil. Two mil, our cost would be like seventeen and a half million dollars that we'd be on the line for. And so, this here, I, you know, hopefully, we don't have anything that's, that's costly anyway. But at the same time, uh, North Dakota found out that it was a huge cost up there. And so, I think this is a very, uh, proactive measure, and I think we can, uh, be very happy that this is, was passed, and that put into law in South Dakota.
Thank you, Gary. Holly, any, no information? If not, um, did we miss committee reports? Commissioner La Croix?
Uh, I attended YFS board meeting earlier in the week. Uh, you guys might have gotten an email requesting for the kids fair coming up this weekend, they're looking for volunteers and so forth. Um, one of the other things with the YFS board is, I apologize, I didn't bring any information. But the Girls Inc. and Company had, had recognized Ms. Hagcock as one of the alumnis of the year. If anybody hasn't seen, she was one of three, seen the story and, and read it. But I think you can get online to look that. So congratulations, Ms. Hagcock, on that.
Thank you, Lloyd.
We appreciate it. Um, one of the other things I did attend was the mayor's, uh, early childhood education meeting, which is a, a deal from National League of Cities, held at the Journey. He held two different ones. He's got another meeting on the twenty-first, and this is kind of a spin-off from, uh, early, or Starting Strong, Early Childhood. If you haven't seen the movie, or seen that, there's a couple of different clips of how important early childhood is, and the effects of it. It, it's, uh, makes you really think. I mean, I, the, the movie was like, an hour and ten minutes long, but it was very good. And I actually, I missed the first time it was shown, and challenged the, the weather to get there, because it was blizzard now when I went the second time. And I was really surprised at the turnout that it had. But there's a, a planning session, and as I said, this is National League of Cities, which, you know, I, myself, and, and Deb have been involved in like, the Starington Families Task Force, and this is kind of another step up from that. I think Deb was involved with- I think Deb was involved with, uh, Bank on Rapid City and some other things that that had, and Malcolm Chapman was, uh, on the Starting Strong, early childhood development, and this is kind of a spinoff to kind of do that, and the mayors are really looking forward to, uh, trying to get some statewide funding for it, and I can't give much more details, I didn't really take notes, but I do have the packet I can have ran off. Otherwise, for other meetings, you know, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations, Ms. Hagcock.
Yeah, congratulations.
Commissioner LaCroy. Mr. DeSanto?
Madam Chair, the, uh, bad weather canceled all of my committee, so, uh, I, I've got, uh, I think weed and pests rescheduled for tomorrow, so I'll be heading to that.
You, you go there, cuz I'm your alternate, I noticed.
Yeah.
I'm teasing you, Commissioner Ross Connect?
Uh, I've been doing a little research, uh, on the building we got, with regards to the, uh, building committee, trying to come up with some different solutions that we might, uh, work on for disposal of the property on the cross street at some point in the future. And, uh, as Mark said, I, I was really looking forward to going to Pier for the two-day workshop, and, uh, I, I doubt that that's gonna get rescheduled, but I was really looking forward to it, and I was hoping I'd have some more information today, but.
They have a fall one, too.
With the bad weather, uh, very limited.
They have a fall one, too, sir, so, it's, it works out good, so, sorry. Any other follow-up, Commissioner Ross Connect?
Uh, that's it for the day.
Okay, Commissioner Drews?
None for me.
So, a couple of things for me, um, and from our commission, I did send out a thank you to everybody involved, the emergency services, the media, and everybody else that were involved, and our highway department, for our blizzard that happened, uh, our emergency manager said that was the best organized and, um, well-thought-out, uh, process in which we did that, and that was, um, our staff, our building the grounds, and many people, uh, again, through the media, that helped us and made that a success. So, I was just kind of the side liner in one sense, but, um, with that, all that information that was told to me and the rest of the, um, uh, team, it made, it made it pretty simplified. So, great job, uh, county and, and team players and all of the blizzard and in our community. And then, the other thing that was pretty cool today is I went, and I have done this before, is I went to Health and Human Services, they have employee recognition in the mornings, and we have a twenty-eight-year person there, her name is Charlene, they're gonna be glad, cuz I was messing up their names. Charlene's been there twenty-eight years, and I asked her, well, why would you stay here twenty-eight years? And she said, you know, this is like my, uh, second family here, and I really love it. And I thought that was pretty cool, and a, a big compliment to Pennington County, and a big compliment to Barry and, and their team. And then, there's also a tenure, and she was Gretchen, she works with a, uh, our Safe Solutions, and, um, just some really good comments about, um, how team and, and how they learn about different people and, and the, the struggles and the barriers people have to go through. It's pretty amazing that this team of people deals with that every day, and you should see, um, they're very kind, and you can just see in the committee their hearts, so it's pretty good, it's pretty awesome. And then Sarah has been here with us five years, so, um, if any time that anybody, or I'll put it out there, if you'd like to go to one of these recognitions, um, with me this year, um, you're more than welcome, cuz, um, it's good to ask your team once in a while, especially people that have been here for a long time as well, um, what makes you stay? So, and you always hear really good comments, and I'll keep saying this, and, and Gary can attest to this. We have a really good team, Pennington County, guys, from our staff to our employees, and we show it. We're not perfect like anybody, there's gonna be issues and barriers for us as well, but a lot of times, our staff knows how to work through that, and we appreciate that about our staff, and that just showed through the blizzard or going to some of these, uh, different recognitions. It's pretty awesome, so, thank you, um, team, uh, Board of Commissioners as well. I think we're doing well, we're a great team, and we work well together, and we are solving, um, that makes it easier to solve more and more problems, the more team we get, and like I said, we don't always agree on everything, but the bottom line is, do we get the job done? And do we find good solutions for accounting? I think, um, I'm proud of this board and how we have worked together and how we're moving forward, um, as well, like the staff, so, um, it's pretty cool to see, so, thank you for all you guys do as well.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you. Sorry about my feel-good speech, but, [laughing], Deb Hagcock has to have a few of those once in a while. So, number twenty is approval of vouchers, and I have to abstain, do I abstain from? It's six zero, six five zero four five, there's two items on that I need to abstain from.
The Price Motel, right?
Yes, ma'am. So, do I abstain from the whole voucher, or just that item?
I would ask that the board make a motion to pull that one, and then vote on the rest of them, which you can vote on, and then you'll need to abstain from payment of that one.
Okay, so if we could, um, okay, to pull, I need to pull item six five zero four five, Price LLC, there's two items on there for four hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion that we, we remove those two items.
Second.
And I would be abstaining from them, so, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and now the vouchers in whole, after that, a motion?
Move approval of the vouchers.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item twenty-one, the public? You aren't the public.
That your name?
I forgot to, uh, mention, well, when I was up here, that, uh, load restrictions east of Highway seventy-nine have been, will be put into place tomorrow.
Tell us what that means, please.
So, heavy haul truck traffic on asphalt roads east of Highway, e, excuse me, asphalt county roads, east of Highway seventy-nine, it's, uh, seven tons per axle? Seven tons per axle, um, east of Highway seventy-nine, we, we think probably next week, uh, west of seventy-nine is gonna go in, so, looking at the freeze track, um, the whole state's gonna kind of put load restrictions on within a week, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that, Superintendent Joe Miller. Okay, number twenty-two, we have one more executive session, team, so, um, could we have a motion?
Move to go into executive session?
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. All opposed, adjourn.
Motion to, yeah, adjourn, by DeSanto, second by LaCroy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.